Um, not doing well at all.
They're not?
No, sir. I got a bunch of list of stuff, um, that they haven't done. And I could present that now, or you want me to wait till five? I could present however you want to do.
Yeah, let's just talk about when he's here.
Okay.
If you want to go, you know, C.C. would give him, we would give him benefit of the doubt in trying to have him stay in business, but
Okay.
if he didn't want to stay in business, we sure don't want a big fire.
Okay, do you want me to go ahead and go over?
We didn't have one of those.
Yeah. You want me to go ahead and go over the stuff now, or you want to wait till?
No, I'll just wait till five.
Okay.
But I do have a quick question, if I may, Mr. President. What, um, have they made any progress?
No, ma'am, no, no progress since the last time we was in here.
He did the outside.
He, he did clean the access road up is the only thing he has done so far.
And do we have like, what, because what were we using to really gauge him anyway? To just check off the list of things that you gave him, is that kind of?
Yes, ma'am, what we do is we, uh, we operate off the international fire code adopted in city ordinance. And, um, that's how we actually write him up on violations. And usually what we do is, you know, give him time to, which we did, have given him time to do what he needs to do to comply. And, uh, he hasn't done anything as to this yet, so.
The last two weeks he's done nothing.
No, sir.
He didn't, didn't respond to you, Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, um, I'll also have a PowerPoint at, uh, five.
Five o'clock.
And I got some other stuff to present to you.
Okay, we'll have to.
All right, thank you.
Maybe time to provoke on him there. Now, we got, uh, this, uh, lady on Deerfield Drive that wants to review her news. Brandon, what you, what you had on that?
And I spoke to Ms. Graham earlier about it, um, and I'll just give you a, kind of a brief overview. What we did is just pull all the complaints for Deerfield, Deerfield Road from, uh, January of eighteen. Uh, there were twenty total complaints coming in through three-on-one, three-on-one request. Five of them are specific to her actual address. Uh, the majority of those are all going to be for parking violations. She received four complaints for parking off the driveway in the front yard and one for, uh, parking on the street.
Okay.
We, we did issue a couple of warnings in August of twenty twenty to her about the parking violations. Uh, and then we actually cited her, uh, the inspector gave her two parking tickets in, uh, February of twenty-one. Um, and then the last complaint that she was speaking on the other night was, was one regarding a fence. And it was very minor, it was a fence gate, like she said, it had fallen off, was laid on the ground. Uh, I think the inspector kind of gave way to the pressure of the neighborhood, calling in so many complaints, and did send a notice to her regarding the gate getting it picked up. When he went back over there, he simply complied it, considered her to be in good standing with him. And I think in hindsight, he actually realizes it probably was a very minor infraction that he, they sent notice on this last time. Uh, like I said, the majority of the issues for her property are going to be regarding her parking.
So we should, this should be okay at this point?
I believe so. Yes, sir, like I said, she's, that evening when she came up, she was, she was not on the resolution. We had already closed out her complaint previously.
Okay, all right.
Like I said, I think the only issue we really needed to address was the parking with her.
Parking?
Yes, sir.
She got tickets for parking on the yard?
Yes, sir.
We can't excuse those really. Ms. Graham, you okay?
It ain't my district.
I know it's not, but you, I think you were, you were asking her questions.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Um, I got, me and Mr. Harsh talked about it, and I think.
Why don't you pull your mic over? Pull your, your mic turned up.
I'm sorry, me and Mr. Harsh spoke about, spoke about this, and I think she's going to be fine. It was, um, she's just going to have to do what she has to do, park on the curb and just not park in the, on her grass, um, from there. And, and he said the other one about the gate's already been closed out, so that's no longer even an issue for her. So it's, she should be fine.
Okay.
We should be able to.
Item number three, Mr. Mitchell's going to carry that over, is that right? Item number four, how long are you going to carry that over, Mr. Mitchell, on number three?
Mr. Car has some issues with, uh, meeting the next Tuesday.
So two weeks will be enough? Okay, all right. I don't want to print, print, print it again if we don't, we're going to carry it over longer than that. Hear me, Madam Clerk?
You're going to, you're just.
He's going to carry it over just two weeks.
Just to the next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting. I was, if it took longer than that, we're going to just carry it over a month, but.
Okay.
Well, good. Okay, number four is the, uh, distribution for the waterworks. Going to get rid of a piece of property down here on North Court Street. It's a beautiful old property, a piece of building. They have their old pump station for the waterworks. They're going to sell it to EJI, which is good. EJI make it something really nice. It's good.
Is this a substitute we have too?
I can't hear you.
No.
Where'd your mic at?
It's one, it's one in the packet.
Oh, okay, all right.
The one that was laying on your desk when you came in is one the mayor's going to introduce.
Okay.
Entirely different.
All right, number five.
Is there something new the mayor want to introduce to them?
I think that.
Mayor's going to introduce it when he comes in.
I think number five is a duplication of what we already got. I think Council Larkin already put that in place many years ago.
Is it different? Because that's what I thought.
No, it, I think it's just with what we have going on in the city of Montgomery. We just want to emphasize that the city council in the city of Montgomery.
Yeah, just say it.
Yeah, participate in the minority, minority participation with our contracts.
Our airport board needs to know about this.
And I asked a question yesterday, Mr. Eats, um, when you were trying to see was.
The airport board a entity of the city, so he was supposed to be checking on that. Um, because that's the question that I brought up, and he had to make sure that they did follow up under.
They did.
Those guidelines.
Well, they, they govern entity, they follow that, yeah.
Um, airport, the board, the, uh, airport.
Board of Donegal City.
Right, what was the question?
Um, we was just asking about, I guess they made a decision about not doing, I think it was what, twenty percent of the representation for his minority, they voted it down. And I just wanted to see, I, I asked Mr. Eats last time, do this ordinance apply for them as well, the thirty percent?
This is only, uh, for people who contract with the city.
Contract work, yeah.
So, and so the airport board does not have the same requirements and parameters as the city contract? Their contracts are separate because they're under, uh, they're, you know, signed by the board?
Correct.
So they don't have the same requirements we have as the city?
Right, this is, um, this resolution is just putting into place a procedure they would like to see that the mayor wants to see the city follow and require, uh, encourage contractors when they're doing business with the city to put forth their best efforts to use, um, DBE businesses. So it's basically just governing the contracts that, that we control. And it will, will require our contractors to have certain language in there regarding EEOC requirements, that they're complying with those, and that they'll attempt to use DBEs for thirty percent of the value of their contracts.
You know, we hired the Moore Group.
Yeah, Zigmore, Moore, Ziegler.
They worked, they worked for helping the city get that accomplished in every contract we do. They kind of, they kind of oversee it, I'd say, in a way. Mr. Moore's died, and I think his daughter runs it now.
Yes, Carmen Ziegler.
Is that right?
Yes, Carmen Ziegler, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, number five, that's, that's it, thirty percent, okay? Number six, number six has got some issues with it. I mean, that, the reality of it, anybody want to talk about it other than me?
I guess what, we're just doing a resolution supporting, not a ordinance to change in the name, correct?
But I, but Mr. Um, Mitchell, I'm concerned about that because I understand the purpose in us doing this is to kind of say, we are for it, but I, I, I don't know if that's our place to be for that. We don't live on that street, you know, we don't, I, I've never seen, well, and I had been here long, just a small amount of time, um, that this would be something that we would do a resolution for to say rename a street, you know? And I think you don't, we don't have the support of the people on the street. We don't have sixty-five percent of the people, uh, on the streets, you know, saying yes to this at this point, so.
I guess what, what percentage are we at? Are we not there because they're not responding, or we not there because they just don't want it?
You got some yeses, some yes and some no's?
Ms. Blaylock, do you know the, the yes, the no's, the no response?
There were a hundred and thirty-six property owners on the street. They have received thirty-nine yeses and twenty-two no's, and seventeen have been returned by UPS.
So that's eighty-one, or eighty, seventy-nine, eighty?
Hold on, let me, I got, somebody sent me a, um, text message on this today, so just hold on one second. I'll tell you the percentage. It's in this, um, text message, and it says the percentage.
For the new people on the council, this has been a very difficult thing because it's not just changing the street. It's changing everybody's checking books, their mail, all that kind of stuff. They check for everything, other than they do, and so it's pretty drastic. And, uh, it's not as easy to say it. It's pretty easy to say, yeah, it's good. I understand that Chris Conway had a way of doing this where you would put up, like Dexter Avenue is Dexter Avenue, but it's also Market Street. And somehow they did, did that, um, and it's a brown sign versus a green sign. I don't know what the deal is about how you do that, but it's, it's something about that. I think we ought to try to talk this out a little further and say, um, what you got, Cruz?
Normal procedures go through the planning commission, change the street name.
We, we know, we know that, yeah, right. This, this has nothing to do with changing it, it's just, it's just saying we thought we, we're okay with the idea. I think, I think probably the best thing we could do on this particular resolution is say, we support something for Fred Gray, you know? The name change is very difficult, and I think we're all going to have a hard, hard time. Because you've got two things here, you've got the sixty-five percent rule that the planning commission has, and then you have the state rule on the, uh, the name Jeff Davis anyway, how you do that. So that's going to be an, an issue we got to deal with. And it, and then you have the situation that I'm, I want to check out myself, I haven't heard this today, that if we are a part of changing that name, then we're liable for it also. So I think we've got several things here to deal with. So it's not as simple, it's not as simple as it, it seems. Go ahead, C.C.
Mr. President, and I understand what Ms. Graham was saying, but based on this, it's just a resolution. We're not changing a name. It's just saying we support, like you say, something being named after Mr. Gray, uh, the Attorney Gray, whether it be Jeff Davis Avenue or whatever. They're just saying from a council standpoint that we support in expressing that something be named in his honor.
I think if you strike Jeff Davis Avenue, but you, you know, I think the reality of it, they're trying to do Jeff Davis.
It says to rename Jeff Davis Avenue.
Yeah.
So it's not something, it's literally saying to rename this street, that's what this resolution is saying.
I know, that's what it's saying, but we're not voting on the renaming because that has to come back to us from the planning commission and go through the, the further steps in order to get it done.
So what's the point in us doing it, just?
I guess to say we support the name change.
Do you support the name change?
Really doesn't mean anything, I don't think.
I have a problem.
Does it, does it, who is council liable for anything on this?
Three ain't here.
Are we liable?
You have legislative immunity, but for the criminal fine, um, I think it would just, it would be directed at the city.
At the city, not the county.
I think so. Now, I can't say that, I, I haven't looked into it, but I know some of the cases we've tracked where they've assessed the fine, the, the fine has been assessed against the city. Of course, I haven't seen any that actually dealt with name changes, it's all been removal of statutes.
Can we, can we look at some other ways to honor Attorney Gray? Um, this council, instead of Jeff, and I know this was the, I know it was the mayor's suggestion for this street, and it could have been, look at, can we look at some other ways to honor him? Maybe the street he currently live on, maybe some, some, um, his church or something, you know, I don't know, just some other things.
Audrey, I understand you, you've talked about this kind of thing before, and you might know another way of naming a street versus having to rename the street.
Um, I'm not sure.
How do we do Market Street?
Say that again?
Dexter Avenue is Dexter Avenue, but it's also Market Street, I understand, because of the history there.
Uh, actually, there's a little cut-through road that was Market Plaza. It's not Dexter Avenue. At one time, it was First Alabama Plaza, and that got renamed to Market.
So Dexter didn't get changed?
No, Dexter didn't get changed.
But you know, but now we do, we do have something on Mobile Highway, they call it the Richard Boone.
Expressway.
Expressway, and it's just a portion of Mobile Highway, and we, we have a placard that says that, a marker, but the street didn't officially rename, but that is, it's out there, it's historical, you know, it speaks to that, that portion of it. So is that, and I think that was done through the state and not really locally. It, you know, is that something we could possibly do then?
Uh, that sounds appropriate. I think that I-85 is MLK, you know, expressway for abortion.
But Mobile Highway would be different than the state road.
That's a state.
Federal road.
Yeah.
Has state or federal legislation does that, not us.
The street, right, something like that. So, can we, so can we table this so we can look into that again before we?
That's what, like, do we table, we carry it over and talk about?
Audrey, to your point, I mean, like, a lot of streets are numbered, you know, so like US 31 or, you know, Highway 110 or whatever it is, but they may have a locally designated deal. This just, I don't know if this fits because it's already got a name.
Chris, pull that mic up, or whatever.
Yeah, I was just saying that, uh, some of the streets that, that she's talking about or that we've mentioned might have a, uh, a state route number or a US highway number, so you, you designate it to some, some naming scheme. Uh, you know, this already has a name, I don't know, uh, I don't think we would want to duly name it. Uh, but there are some, you know.
Is.
Well, and see, my thing is if we had sixty-five percent of the people on the street said, yes, this wouldn't be before us. This, it wouldn't be necessary for us to do a resolution, we would, it would just be moving forward. We wouldn't even be a part of the equation. And so, and that's just the only reason why I personally stand back, because we don't have a sixty-five percent. And I understand this doesn't change the street name, but I don't want it to look like this council or me, or we're trying to be persuasive to the people that live on this street. Um, that, you know, because I, I, I'm not going to have to pay the cost to change anything on my checks or, you know, any other agency or whatever they may have to, I won't have to do any of that, they will. And so I just don't want it to look as if I am or this council is being persuasive in that matter, so.
Okay, well, I think you just said you want to carry it over, so we have, we have time to talk about it, okay?
Thank you.
All right, number seven, had the district, the, the voting precincts for District One.
Just a technicality we have to go through. It's just a technicality we have to go through.
No changes?
No, sir.
And you start, we start qualifying when?
May the eleventh.
May the eleventh?
Through May the, the twenty-fifth. They have two weeks that's time to qualify.
Number eight, Mr. Peters, fines, chief. I know we got one of those bars in that, in that area opened back up two weeks ago. And this one's the same, same situation as when y'all closed down. He's back with his license now.
But I don't think it's about no money. What I would do prior to, uh, you, you calling this up, I have a conversation with him.
You have?
I, I will have a conversation with him on that and just, uh, the, the council on that.
Man, they seem like they want to do the right thing, but.
You know, and I believe so, they've been closed, we haven't had any issues, uh, because they've been closed. So we will have a, a good conversation, and I'm not opposed to that.
We can always close them again.
Mr. President, can, chief, can you refresh my memory on this? Is this the one?
Yeah, in, in about a three-week span, we had two shootings out there, um, and was a real concern at the U-bar. Uh, and they've been closed ever since. And so I think they are, uh, repositioning themselves and have a better plan. We will still monitor them like we are monitoring the Signature Club, Fifty-Fifty Narrow Lane, and that's not a problem.
Is this the same gentleman that's getting this club?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, same guy.
The fire department also shut them down, the fire department also shut them down because of overcrowding, but they've paid that fee also.
Yeah, I, I think we're just asking for a whole nother can of worms. I mean, it's up to this council, but.
I recall this young man, he reached out to me, is it Mr. Jim Wright's district, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I remember this young man reached out to me and, and, and I'd of course referred him to Mr. Jim Wright. But he did talk about how previous the COVID and we shutting, and, and this council shutting down other clubs. He had, you know, no incidents on his property for about a year, year and a half span, something like that. So he was keeping a pretty tight ship over there, just I guess when we started closing down some of these other businesses, some of these certain people started coming there. And he said to me, that's how it count, he feel that he got in this predicament, but he was, you know, he was doing pretty good for a span of time.
Isn't this the same gentleman that lives in Atlanta?
Yes.
No, it's, I think it's two of them.
Yeah, it's two of them. One brother's in Atlanta and one is here in Montgomery.
Only thing that I would say that, I just.
Talk about it, Floyd, what's your reserve?
Yeah, I, I just would suggest that we, we, we won't do a lounge license, they would have to do a restaurant, and they would just have to operate as a restaurant. I think Charlie gave them the option to, I think initially, close at ten. Um, and I, I just feel strongly, if they going to do, be a restaurant, we need to just hold them as being a restaurant.
Well, we opened up, was it Escape or whatever, that one, two weeks ago?
About three weeks ago, yes, sir.
And chief, wasn't there, wasn't there an incident at that place as well, incident?
There was, uh.
Somebody got shot?
Yeah, somebody got shot inside, um, you know, we watched the video, they was very cooperative on that the, the first, the very week that they was open. And so we're going to have those challenges. And again, it's, it's in your district, uh, President Jenwright. Um, I heard with, uh, Mr. Mitchell said, um, you know, I'm going to kind of, you know.
Either, I don't, I don't think they want to be, I think they want to be a bar anyway, I really don't think, you put them at ten o'clock, they're going.
Charlie, they'll never make it as a restaurant, I mean, with the law.
Well, it's true, they won't.
The law that we passed, I think, is it Brenda, that seventy-five percent of your receipts?
Sixty-fourty, but the liquor license is not before you, that's A B C. All y'all did was revoke the business license. I don't know if A B C revoked their, uh, A B C license or if it's pending. I, I, Mr. Uh, Mitchell asked me that, and I said, that's an A B C call, not ours, whether they're just pending.
I was surprised I came back on, on here anyway.
So why?
Yeah, because it's, it's been less than a year, so how long do we keep them closed? And, uh, what conversation, uh, have we been having with them? We have in the police department.
They've called me and they've got a new, another plan, but that's, you know how the plans are.
So can we put it off and, and really sit out because, you know?
Yeah, let's do that, just hold off on it, okay?
You know, and we got to work on this.
We can't just let them slide in here.
Because if I.
This thing just slid on, I didn't put it on agenda, they just got on, they.
They made an application for business license, once they had paid everything, their next step is to apply for a business license, then they kick it.
We'll carry it over.
And because if I remember correctly, chief, didn't it, I mean, it cost the city a lot of money running our details.
Yeah, and, and we, and, and it's a challenge. And again, the first week we, uh, Escape opened, we had the shooting, but they was very cooperative. We went, we went there, uh, we still going to monitor, but it was right at the very end. This guy had it stuck somewhere, we saw it on the video that he was patted down, and he went in and came out. We got it on the video, made some arrests. Uh, so they doing what they supposed to do, however, we still have incidents. And so we just got to minimize that as best as possible on that, so.
But, but, but let me say this.
Uh, Mitchell, go ahead.
It costs us no, no more than Eastdale Mall, no more than the, the hotels, no more than, um, Pace Gas Station. So we are having the same incidents at all these places, but I don't see them coming to a show call's hearing.
Coming to what now?
A show call, I don't see them in front of us. You know, only people that I see in front of us are, are the club owners. You know, where, where's the gas station? So we, we're, no matter where, what we do, we still going to have that same issue is whether it be at Eastdale Mall, whether it be at the gas stations. So we can't always just say, hey, let's, let's close it down and don't deal with the issue, because you're always going to have issues. The clubs have been closed down for six months, and we still having those same issues where it's, where it's shooting throughout the city.
I understand, but I mean, then, then, then tell us how to address the issue, I mean, you know.
We can't run from it.
You, you open up the Escape and you already have a shooting there.
But we had a shooting at Eastdale Mall.
In less than a week.
We had a shooting at Eastdale Mall. We had a shooting at the gas station.
Made arrests, made arrests?
Yeah, but I mean, but my, and that's what we're doing, we're making those arrests. We had a shooting at the apartment complex.
Well, the.
As a matter, and as a matter of fact, while we talking about shootings, if I may, um, the shooting we just recently had over there by the Boom Boom Club?
Yes.
But I was told that it wasn't the Boom Boom Club. So, okay, so is that a business?
So, so it, it was one of those pickup parties. Uh, so we did the, uh, the follow-up and, and, uh, went back out there. It was a house right across from the Boom Boom, uh, that had a teen get-together, and so it wasn't something.
So it was a house?
Um, it was something, um.
Was it like a grocery store thing?
No, no, we talking about a residential, uh, dwelling.
It was a house, okay.
And so it, it was just a get-together that teens got together. You had a, a couple of young folks that made, got on the call on social media. This is the rallying, um, um, spot, they met up, there were some words, and we still investigating that. Uh, got some strong leads on multiple offenders.
Okay.
Chief, what is the Boom Boom Club?
Oh, so the Boom Boom is on Day Street.
Did we give them a license?
Man, they've been had a license.
They've been, and, and let me say this, they had nothing to do with this.
But, but where is the Boom Boom Club?
You don't need to hang out. I ain't going to tell you.
It ain't that kind of club.
I've never heard of this place.
They, they were, they were very cooperative, uh, they, they, and we don't have any issues there. Uh, and so this was something isolated, it was in the vicinity, um, the landmark is the Boom Boom.
Right, that's what everybody's saying, yeah.
The Boom Boom.
It's, it's, it's an adult.
Okay.
So, but this, so Ms. Mitchell, I'm just going to agree with what you said, that we have shootings.
Mr. President, on, on number eight, this, this is what I would like to see, and I know we closed them down for server issues, uh, with the business license that we revoked it. Uh, so if they have a plan, let's hear what their plan is. Because if you bringing us the same old plan, we going to have the same old.
Well, I, I don't know what the old plan was.
Right, so, you know, let's hear what.
I'll take it, we'll, 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 we'll carry them over two weeks and decide, let them have a, have a talk with them in the meantime, sit down with them.
Yeah, I want to know what they going to do different.
Yeah, see what they going to do, but I, you know, the reality of it, I just had a call from the developer for MapCo. Y'all know who MapCo is?
Uh-huh.
Okay, MapCo had plans to build more stations, they're gone. They're not going to build anymore because of, this is exactly what you're talking about. They can't deal with the crime in those stores, and so they just going to get out of here, okay? So we got that thing to deal with, and MapCo called and said, we're out of here, you know, they had more stations. Those are issues we got to deal with, because these tru, these clubs have got shootings in them, and, but they're shooting everywhere, other places too. Culture thing, doesn't have anything to do with the club so much as it does the culture, in my opinion. Anyway, all right, we'll carry this over and we'll talk to them at, at, at five, okay? Number nine, is the General Dollar Store. Didn't we, didn't they, didn't, they didn't show up last time?
No, they, this is not the same people, that was Family Dollar Store.
Okay.
This is different group.
Okay, all right. This is your, east, huh, yours?
I'm asking, there's so many of them.
Yeah, I know it, east.
Yeah, that's in my.
It's yours, okay, you're good. All right, the Hoka Lounge on Madison Avenue. Can somebody tell me what a Hoka Lounge is?
Uh, uh, the Boom Boom Room.
It's next to the Boom Boom.
The Boom Boom Room, okay. I understand they're smoking, they're smoking something out of pipe, is that correct? Got tubes coming out, and you got flavored, flavored smoke.
It's kind of like a hooker bacon, tobacco.
We got that one on downtown, we got another one I know just come up today, that I've saw, it's coming for the next meeting, I believe. But we not had any issues with them, they don't have, they don't seem to be, um, party animals. Not less of a party lounge than, uh, anything else. Anybody got any experience with them anywhere?
Yes, they're popping up all over the country, Charlie.
Are they really?
Yep, this probably just one a minute that's going to come before us.
We got one more coming.
There's already been one out at Somerset.
Across from Fraser Church, and they're, they're there, Burbank, Burbank. Okay, we'll talk to this guy about that when he gets here. Okay, number eleven, number eleven is this cigar social bar on Eastdale, Eastdale Circle. That's okay with me. They want to kill, and they're sitting there smoking cigars. We got several of those cigar places in town, Doctorong, two of them, tell you something about cigars. Number twelve, Clean City Commission, want me, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir.
I'm putting the lady on, replacing my man on the industrial development board, young lady that would be real good, she would be good for that. And then we have on number fourteen, appeal of proposed demolition. Brandon, you know about that?
I haven't had any contact from the owner or the lawyer to file the, the appeal. Um, two seventeen East Park, we've moved into Chisholm, trying to affect, they've got dozens and dozens of boarded up houses, um, dozens of loans just on East Park. dozens and dozens of boarded up houses, um, dozens alone just on East Park, and it was just one that we sent notice on, it was dilapidated, boarded up, um, and all we would be looking for is just a plan of repairs.
Why are we on this? Brandon, if a person wants to buy a house to fix up, how do we do that? I've, I'm kinda, we, we, we had that done one way, how are we doing that now?
Well, if, if they're coming through us, they would go through the, uh, the, uh.
The people come to you to buy the house?
It depends, if it's a privately owned, like this structure right here would be owned by Mr. Contral, they would have to work out a deal with Mr. Contral, and all we would ever ask is that they convey to the new, the prospective buyer that it hasn't flat, fact been flagged.
So you, you're saying that they would have to pay the nuisance fees on it?
They would, yes, sir, like I said, it, it all varies, I mean, if it's a state property versus city property, versus a private property.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, I guess my point is it probably not even worth what the state, what the nuisance fees are sometime.
A lot of times it isn't, no, sir.
I, I just, I had a call from District Three this afternoon about people that wanna fix the houses up.
Yes, sir.
And, and young couples, whatever, wanna fix the houses up, and they wanted to, it was one way about to tear down, and I, I wish on Plum Street or Cherry Street. But they, they wanna get it tore down because it's squatters in the house, and, uh, but they're young people and they wanting to redo those houses, and if we can get this property to these people, at no cost, in my opinion, be best way to get it, somebody owns it, we ain't gotta cut it no more.
Yes, sir, yeah, and Mr. Carr's, uh, you know, in the past has worked on several, Thomas Carr.
Okay.
He's worked on several different things, about trying to.
All right, I'm gonna put him with Thomas.
Kinda speed up the process as far as clearing the title, and then us being able to alleviate some of our liens. Uh, but the first step is them having to get it from the state of Alabama.
Okay, all right.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Before Brandon sits down, um, and Brandon and I have had a conversation about this, I wanted to ask the councils what they thought. And Mayor, this is a problem all over the city, there are out-of-town owners that own properties, and we have one, and this is why it came to my attention, in Carriage Hills, for example, they won't fix the roof, it's a company out of California, they have two or three properties here, but yet we don't require them to get a business license, so the course of our, 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 our recourse is we send them, quote, a subpoena to come to court in Montgomery, which is never gonna probably get served to them, in California, and yet the residents have to live around these houses, how can we require out-of-state owners to get some sort of type of, quote, license? So we can, our recourse would be, hey, if you don't wanna fix the property, we're gonna pull your business license, so you cannot rent A, B, C, and D. Y'all follow where I'm headed with that?
Yeah, let me ask a question, Brandon, in that scenario, that person is not keeping the house up, so he, they's turned into you, and you're not, you have to notify him, that owner, that he's got a property problem.
Yes, sir.
What happens if that turns, if the mail's returned to you?
Explain the subpoena process, what you told me.
So what we do is serve notice, uh, we try to identify all and any property owner, uh, we'll serve a notice that says you've got A, B, and C repairs needed, and they must be done within a sixty-day period, uh, if they're not done, then we would submit a summons to the municipal court, trying to subpoena them into municipal court for failing to, uh, comply with international property maintenance codes, uh.
And you said what happens is, let's just, uh.
Well, it's not, it's, it's not an extraditable.
Yeah, they're in A, B, C, A, B, C County, Charlie, and A, B, C goes out to, to serve the subpoena, they're not there, guess what? They never go back again, and even if they get it, they're not gonna come a hundred percent of the time.
Well, you know, we may, we, I think we probably need to sit, think seriously about this eminent domain deal. I mean, some of these houses where people just treat us like that, we're gonna have to decide how serious we can get with this, I mean, taking people's property away is not the American way of doing things, but in this scenario, these people are about, they're hurting the city of Montgomery, and we got a bunch of them. These state, all these state properties, I mean, there's, they're, they're not gonna do anything with them, we gotta deal with them. So the sooner we can get them under our control totally, and then we could sell them for a little, whatever we could sell them, get some developer to take them over for nothing, you know, just to get them back into, in process, and, and, uh, cause this, I, I don't know how much we're spending just keeping this property up. I mean, keeping it cut and whatever, then putting the money back, I don't know how much is going against these properties as far as money is going against it for their tax, but I guess these people probably don't even pay the tax on them anymore, they didn't let them go.
Now, if, if it's assessed to the state, it would be for delinquent, the payment of taxes, uh, which, and we do, uh, we do abate them and then file a lien, but our liens also include a hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee on, on not only state, but all, also private property, and I don't remember what the numbers are as far as what we recoup, but, but I believe it's, it's pretty good as far as.
Is it pretty good?
Yes, sir.
Well, I know we got a lot of vacant properties around, we, we need some way to, to stop this stuff.
Yes, sir.
You know, I know the waterworks will tell you, they got a ton of properties that are disconnected.
Yes, sir.
A big, big, big number, five thousand.
Could, could, could we require out-of-state owners to get a business license?
Yes. Just make an ordinance.
If you knew it, how would you know?
How would you know?
How would you know?
I think that was the issue, I think Mr. Larkin.
Hold, 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 Brandon's talking, get close to your mic, Brandon, I wanna hear this. Can't hear you, Mike, can't hear you.
I think Mr. Larkin was kinda moving that direction with the rental registration, but I think the enforcement of it and the requirement of somebody, basically what, what we kinda thought was only honest people would come forward and tell us that they actually have rental properties in the city, versus just, I'm gonna run the risk, and if you catch me, you catch me somewhere down the road.
Okay.
And I do think we, we actually had a roundtable discussion with inspections, uh, uh, business licenses, and there were just going to be some hurdles that we weren't confident we would be able to overcome in requiring the registration, like he said. We can't necessarily, I mean, we're basically in the business of then going door to door to try to figure out who's a rental property, who's not, and then try, tracking down the owners, so there's some challenges there.
So then, then what is our, what is our reply, and we actually are gonna try another avenue, but if I didn't have this avenue to go down, what do I tell Ms. Moore that lives next door to this house? You're gonna have to live next door to this, I mean, there has to be something that this, that we can do or, or find a way to come up with. I can't tell that lady, you're gonna have to live with it, that's not fair.
Unfor, unfortunately, a lot of cities are, are dealing with this, I think, you know, the city of Detroit has probably had the most, um, widely publicized, white removal project probably in the last ten, if not twenty years, and so, you know, I think what we have to be careful is where do you infringe on a property owner's rights, and how do you, um, navigate that with obviously the, the property owner, uh, that may live next door, across the street, or even in just the, the same block, uh, as a property like this, and that's where we run into some of the obstruction, if you will, some of the challenges, probably better word, uh, of how do you navigate the property owner's rights versus what a city can do through, uh, an eminent domain, or even through local ordinances? And then, you know, for us, I, I welcome any discussion about it, because it's, it's not just, you know, one district or the other, I mean, it's throughout the city, because we have a, we have an older city, and we have a city that has a large landmass of vacant inventory, and so it is something that, uh, we have to address, because whether there's squatters, whether there're people doing illicit activities, or whether it's just a house that's in decay, from our standpoint, we can't go too far without running into legal trouble, and we have to get some guidance and assistance from the council, and I'm willing to work with you, uh, on any ideas that, that you have, as well as benchmarking some that have worked in other communities to address this. Now, let me also say this, one other thing that we, we also saw this over the county, and we would hear some of it at the tax sales, and, and this will change, you know, not today, but it'll change as the property taxes, you know, as the mileage kinda goes up, it's not as, uh, cheap for some of these companies just to hold on property for, on their roles for various tax, uh, purposes for themselves. That will also change, because the cost of holding on that property may ma, may make it, um, less cost efficient for them to, or less profitable for them to have a property, they're not gonna put anyone in, or they're not gonna fix up.
And, and, and I agree with that, Mayor, but some of the, some of these companies probably have so many properties, they don't even realize that they own ten properties in Montgomery, they don't even know it, they're just using them as write-offs.
Yep.
And that's frustrating.
I agree.
Well, maybe I have a conversation with Brandon, and we at least try to kick something around, something's gotta be addressed, addressed, and, you know.
And I know we was talking about possibly, you know, not allowing them to purchase, or continue to sell or rent in the city, but maybe if it's some way we can hold them accountable when it's time to play, pay their property taxes, um, then kinda put a lock on them that requires, you know, pay them full, whatever it is, and make that fee a little more, uh, because we have to continually abate them, because they're not keeping up the property.
Can you do that?
I mean, that may be something that's a little, without having to be so, uh, you know, having to recreate the wheel or come up with new legislation for it.
Well, the, the property taxes would be at the county level, as far as assessing.
Right, but I know when we put a lien on it, the, the, you know, Janet Buss is.
Yes, but I was gonna say, our, our actual municipal liens, we filed the nuisance related liens, they do actually encumber the property taxes, and so the property taxes can't be satisfied until the lien is satisfied as well.
So, Ms. Stacy, can we, you know, just do a search and figure out those owners who have multiple homes that, like through a year, we've had to abate them two, three separate times, and they have ten properties, what, you know, a company or whatever, and then we figure out a way how to put an ordinance in place to abate them at another rate, because they are a continual nuisance to the city, and it's, it's just, you know, cumbersome, what we have to go through with them, is there, is, is that something maybe we can do legally?
We can amend it.
Yeah.
We can amend our abate fees, so if you got multiple. Stations, then it just escalates scale that you will have to pay.
And then, like you said, they have so many, they forget, but after they have to pay several thousands of dollars, they start taking note how much money they send in Alabama, and they start paying more attention, hopefully, because if you're gonna get somebody's attention, follow the money. You know, you mess with the money, you get their attention.
That's what I thought.
So, maybe we could do that.
Can you answer?
I don't think we can actually hold them to a higher standard just because they're, they're a business or they own more properties, what.
That's not what I said, I said because they have continual abatements.
It's a repeat offender.
Right, just because we're abating them three and four times a year, several years in a row, you know, not just because they're a business, not just because they have multiple properties, but because they refuse to abide by the ordinance that we have in the city, keep your property up, they won't do it.
We can, uh, you know, we can always amend the ordinance so that per offense, the, the rate goes up.
Okay.
But, but, only thing about it, what about your people that don't cut the grass, if you have an old lady in your neighborhood, she's been abated several times, you gonna take that eighty-year-old?
Now, we don't charge them until after we send them a letter and they don't do it, now, if we send a letter to the old lady, she get it done. Then, she's gotta let that be her one time this year.
Hey, tell her to call Pruitt Lawn Care.
So, you, you gonna, you gonna get it. That's the only problem that you gonna run into, you gonna have some folks that, that's not, you know, multimillionaires.
And maybe, and again, maybe we can set the stipulations where it's not just.
I mean, you got.
Individual, it's multiple properties and multiple abatements, maybe.
Gotta find them, I think you have.
You gotta fit all, where you gotta. Either we gonna address it, so, so, you know, either we gonna address the issue we have, or we gonna skirt around it. You're gonna always have exceptions to the rule, somebody who you don't really wanna see fall in it, but they fall in it, whether it be they don't have the money, they don't have, you know, resources, you know, family members or whatever to help them, but if we're gonna address the people who are getting away, that Glenn's talking about, who have all these properties not doing something, we gotta address it. We can't just say, well, don't address it, because we got Ms. Pauline over here that we really don't wanna see her have that, you know.
I'm not saying don't address it, we just have to be fair across the board.
Right, so, so it just is what it is.
This is a discussion we need to continue, Brandon.
We currently, uh, the way that the ordinance is written now, so we will send you a notice at one point in this year, uh, you would incur no fees until our ten-day grace period is went by, and then on the reinspection, if you haven't complied, you would be assessed a hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee. If we continue our process and actually abate the property, a lien will be filed for the abatement cost of the contractor, as well as the hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee. From that point on, any second letter or third or fourth in a calendar year, uh, you initially receive a fifty dollar subsequent violation fee, regardless of whether you do comply within those ten days or not, if you don't, the administrative fee would be a two hundred dollar fee, plus the cost of the abatement, and then so on and so on. Um, and we also do have, uh, s- some language in ordinances that, that we are allowed, uh, like you said, repeat offender, uh, there is a requirement, or excuse me, an, an option, if, if we abate a property three times in a twenty-four month period, we can again summon you to a municipal court and seek further fine.
But the problem, they ain't showing up, that's what we saying. And Stacy, can you send us a copy of that ordinance, can you, um, or Ms. Blaylock, do you, what, one of y'all, can y'all make sure we get a copy of that ordinance, so we can look at that, and, because maybe there's some language we need to change in there, uh, to kinda see if we can, you know, put a little grip in this, because, you know, we just, it, it's not getting better, and if we stay on this path, it's not gonna get better, it's gonna continue to be what it is, so.
Okay, we can move on. We got the fifteen nuisance agents, then sixteen is the tear 'em down, and we got the one on Poplar Street, Plum Street, those are ones we need to get come down. And then seventeen, same thing, resolution there, and then we got three things on our desk here, uh, two things, I think, got the disposition of the real property for the, uh, Whitewater Park, and that's one thing, I think we, Stacy, you've, you've gone through that, and anybody got any questions, Stacy, how this been put together?
Yeah, Stacy, where we at on the MOU for the Salvation Army?
The original MOU was for thirty days, and it was set to expire on the eighteenth of this month, um, our attorney was finally able to get, get in touch with the Salvation Army's attorneys, so they have got a purchase-sale agreement, uh, initial draft, but Salvation Army has said it's not their local people who would be responsible for approving and signing it, so they asked us for an additional ninety days to, to make sure we finalize the purchase-sale agreement and get it to their authorized signatories, get it signed and get it back, so at this point, we extended it for ninety days, um, what's that, to July, and as I understand it, that they, the cooperative district, and we have looked at the purchase-sale agreement, they have sent it to, to, um, their people at the Salvation Army to make sure they're gonna approve it, and we're waiting to see if they have any proposed changes.
But if we prove this ordinance here.
This is for property that we've already agreed and to transfer to them in the original funding agreement, and.
Well, it didn't have the Salvation Army property in it.
Correct, this is for property where they wanna go ahead and start vacating some streets, so they can go ahead and break ground next month, so they have these five properties that are re, ready to be conveyed, they just wanted to put them before you to get your authorization to say yes, go ahead and convey them to, to the cooperative district, so they can start their work.
Okay.
We should have all this done, hopefully, before the groundbreaking on June seventh?
Ideally.
Okay.
I can say the delay is not on our end, we, we've had the purchase and sale agreement drafted, the delay has been getting the Salvation Army to reach out and put us in contact with their attorneys.
Okay.
So I think now that, that we've got that process going, there's open communication, we're moving a lot quicker.
All right, and what, Ms. Calhoun, you got one here that you wanna do, you wanna represent, one, put it on.
I'm gonna introduce it and just carry it over, we can look over it, it's about, um.
My.
Amendment that legal has, with their signs, that we have a, a big old, what we call obsolete signs that's on properties, uh, billboards and things, that we'll put that in our nuisance ordinance, so we can address it in that, in that way.
Okay, could you carry that over?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I know there were a couple of, of issues that I brought up, and, and I was not in, when you all touched on those, is there any issue regarding item number five, or item number six?
Item number five's fine, we understand that, that's already pretty in there, number six, Ms. Graham has some questions about whether we should do something for Mr. Gray other than renaming the street.
Can I, can I address it, that's, go ahead, Mr. Counsel.
Yeah.
Go ahead. What's the question?
Oh, no, I, I just, um, I'm, I'm, I am, um, when you, when we don't have a six, I know this ordinance doesn't change it, it's more or less saying that we're in agreement with it, um, just because we don't have a sixty-five percent of the, because if we had sixty-five percent of the people on the street, you wouldn't ask for us to do this, we, we, we wouldn't even be a factor in this, it would just be done, you know, and because we don't have that, I stand back on that. And so what I ask is that we carry this over two weeks to see if there are other mechanisms possibly that we could do to honor Attorney Gray, because I do feel like that's, that's a good thing to do, and we should do that, uh, kinda like we have the Richard Boone Expressway on Mobile Highway, the official name of the street didn't change, but it's marked as that, the markers are up, and there's a portion of Mobile Highway that is, can be referred to, um, legally as the Richard Moon, I mean, Richard Boone, um, I think it's Expressway. So, um, we want to kinda look into some of those other ways and see if, if, if something like that would be feasible versus this, since we don't have the full support of the street.
Sure, so, let, let me address that r- real quick, uh. I, I, I think that, you know, when we first brought this up back in, in December, um, we've been going through the process, kind of we were talking about here with, with various property owners, and I called the city councilman in that, whose district the street runs in, that was at that time, Councilman Tracy Larkin, and Councilman Clay McKendes, who was, who expressed support as well as, um, other councilmen on, on the, on the body. What we have run into, in, in part, I think, I think we, we talked about it as well, I hope so, if my memory serves me correctly, but what we have run into has been the lack of response from property owners due to having those absentee, um, owners, unfortunately. Uh, we, we received a very positive feedback where that's concerned. The reason why I wanted to just ask for a show of support, which is what the resolution does, is to, because the, the process has taken this long, um, and it's something that I plan to come back and, and address and bring back to the council, um, where other streets and other edifices may be concerned as well. That's not a, a, an issue for today, but I felt that after trying to work through the current process, that a show, um, of support from the council would go very far because, uh, in my conversation with Attorney Gray, he, he didn't ask for a building, he didn't ask for, uh, anything else, and he was specific. And I think that for someone, uh, who sacrificed so much and someone who has done so much, that, that's very, that's a small step for what this city, uh, could do. And in my opinion, you know, the city should have done something a long time ago. Now, this also coincides with the fact that the street is named after the first president of the Confederacy. So I, I do think that also has to be recognized, and I, and I think that there's some irony there. I think that one, you had a, a person that stood for, uh, many of the things that this city does not represent now, this nation does not represent now, and one who fought for those things that this city and this nation stand for. So there is some symbolism there, but it's also, uh, I think, the, the appropriate way to go about doing that. And I've talked with, uh, President Genarite and other members of the council about other street naming and how tough that has been in the past, uh, whether it was a congressman or whether it was, uh, other leaders in the community, but, but this is one that I think is, is well worth us not putting off any longer because the process unfortunately is going to keep us from doing this, you know, as it has now, because we've got to do something about the ordinance that we have, the absentee property owners which have not responded that holds us from officially doing it. So the resolution is to show that there is support to move forward in that direction, but we still have to come back to the planning commission and then come back to the council for a formal vote to rename the street. So I, 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 I wish I could, I could do it with, with the stoke of opinion, but I can't. Um, we still have to go through that process. So what I'm just asking for tonight is a resolution of support showing that the council does, in fact, um, agree with the, the request that Attorney Gray has made. And Attorney Gray is ninety plus years old, and, um, you know, I, I, I think that as we consider this, the presidential administration and, uh, considering the Presidential Medal of Freedom, I think that it would be appropriate for the city to, to move first and honor a native son as opposed to waiting for something that, that is coming from, uh, the, the federal leadership, uh, to express their honoring, um, of the words and actions of Attorney Gray before we do.
And I appreciate all of the sacrifices and commitments that Attorney Gray has made to the city of Montgomery, to the civil rights movement, and to, um, this nation, and as we moved forward, um, in transforming from what we used to look like to what we look like today, and even though we still have challenges today, we're not in the exact same place. Um, but I also appreciate, too, the ordinance that we do have in place at this time, um, on how this process goes. Again, this doesn't change it, it just shows that we're in support with it, um, and I, you know, and my position is still the same, if you had what you needed, you wouldn't come to us anyway. You know, we wouldn't even be a factor in this, and so I just, I stand back as a factor now, just because I don't want to be, I don't want it to make it seem as if me or the council, maybe, um, are trying to influence people who live on that street, do this, do this, you need to do this, because there are some no's just like there are some yes. I, I saw that in the emails, so it's not like everybody on the street has said yes that you can contact, and then you just have those you can't contact that put you over the number, and, and so that's the only thing holding you up. You do have some people who've said no, for whatever reason, their reasoning is on it, so I just, I just stand back on that. I just feel like it's something, um, that maybe should be decided between the community and the petitioner, which is the city of Montgomery, on that.
Well, let, let me ask this question.
Again, I appreciate Attorney Graves, I take nothing from him, I'm not trying to stop progress, I'm not trying, trying to block his, um, you know, giving a legacy to him in the city of Montgomery, none of that at all. That's why I said, let us look into every possible option to make sure we do that for him. I'm not saying not do it, I'm just saying for me, um, you know, this...
Well, let me, let me ask this question, there, there are a couple of things. One, Attorney Gray isn't a young man, he's not somebody who just came on the scene, so the city has had, since nineteen fifty-five, to figure something out, and the city has not done that, that's number one. Number two...
I wasn't here then, but I'm here now.
Right, that's right. So, so, so number two is, there were certainly things that, that the council could have done prior to my becoming mayor to address that, that, that hasn't been done. So number three, that, what I would throw out and, and, and offer you to consider, is if the issue is with the resolution, then abstain from the resolution. But I don't think we should have to carry the resolution over when we, when we first introduced this in December. So we've had since December to have the conversation as we've been moving forward with the pro, with the process, which we're still continuing to do, and so the community will not, you know, see a, a street sign come down without having their full say, whether it be in a community meeting, whether it be through the planning commission, or whether it be through this body itself. What this is, is just the resolution showing that there is support here. And I understand you as a councilperson don't want to influence the community, unfortunately we don't have a, a councilman that represents District Three, which part of the street runs into, the previous councilperson did support that, uh, late Councilman Tracy Larkin, as the, as does, I think, uh, Councilman McKendes. So I would just ask that, instead of carrying it over, that if there's an issue with the resolution, then I, I respect that, then maybe just not to weigh in on that and allow us to move forward with the resolution.
Now, I, I don't know if you, you, I'm, I, part of that is in my district, too.